Good evening, everyone, and welcome to tonight's Berlin Planning and Zoning Meeting. It's currently about seven o two in the evening, and it is November fifth. The first item on the agenda is the, um, of what, first I wanna make an announcement. The announcement would be that the, for those who are watching us, the Military Experience um has requested that we continue um their application and um and I just want folks who are tuned in for that, if that was an item of interest, we will not be entertaining it tonight. It will be continued while we get to the public hearing, okay? And so that's the first announcement. The second announcement is that John Michael O'Brien, um, a Regent Commission Member has asked to be escorted out of this building. This is Oldman, a Regent Commission Member. And I do wanna welcome two of our alternates who are with us. Um, one I know, which is George Miller. And also, um, at the end, I'm sorry, sir, your name is?
Zero.
Oh, you're zero. Okay, all right, terrific. And I'm seeing that. Okay, so we have five here, and we're regular commission members. Alternates, so it's Mr. Biella. And also Mr. Miller, this time, so kindly has to be seated. Okay. Are you catching this?
Yeah.
Okay, we're still good, we're still good. All right, thank you for that. All right, so to move on, so the approval of the minutes for October fifteenth, twenty twenty. Uh, for those commissioners who are here, um, do you have any corrections or any approvals that I'd like to have?
Make a motion to approve.
All right, Ms. Jorsey, motions.
Second.
Uh, second, uh, by Mr. Sigma for the discussion. And all those in favor? Those opposed? Abstaining, myself, I was not here. I think we have it up right. All right, second item up is gonna be the request for the bond release. This is a request from Raymond from Or for the, uh, Bond Release at the Italian Independent Political Club at sixteen Harding Street. Um, is there anyone here to speak for the bond release?
I assume they were just expecting me to speak?
Um, yes.
Um, that they're all set, they've done everything. You'll see in the supplemental package that, um, engineering is satisfied to actually reduce, release it. I had indicated, um, that they may need a retention, uh, a minimum retention, they do not. And you got Jim Horvath's comment. Um, I have received the request of the Italian club to release the improvements bond that were required in conjunction with the recent site plan approval. The required improvements have been completed, thus the bond may be released. You'll recall this bond and the work they, um, they were most recently approved for was actually a culmination of a bond from, I mean, not, two thousand nine. So that's why it's actually, you know, it's good to be released.
Okay. So we finally finished everything, 'cause I know that at one point they were doing the work and then they, everything got halted at Sandton, and then they came back to finish it up, the project. So we're satisfied with that. Okay, terrific. Commissioners, anything?
Yeah. Make a motion to release the bond?
Motion by Ms. Jorsey, do we have a second?
I'll second that motion.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Rogan. Uh, further discussion? Then all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? So moving on to the scheduling of public hearings. We have a re-subdivision application for PDR Benarop for two lot subdivision at eighteen twenty nine Orchard Road, map twenty one dash four, lot one fifteen, lot ten. Now, the suggested date is going to be November nineteenth, uh, twenty twenty. Do we have a?
So, November nineteenth, twenty twenty.
Okay, Mr. Sigma and second to Ms. Jorsey.
I'll second.
Uh, further discussion or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? So moving on. Second is a special permit site plan application of BT two thousand eight LLC for mixed-use development at four oh four Berlin Turnpike. And the suggested date is going to December third, twenty twenty.
Make a motion to schedule a public hearing for December third.
We have the motion by Ms. Jorsey, do we have?
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Rogan. Thank you. Mr. Biella? Oh, okay.
Sorry. It threw your voice, Steve.
Yeah, I know, I heard it like rumble a lot through.
Perfect.
All right, uh, further discussion or questions on the items? And all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? So moving on, Commissioner Missis, we have the discussion of a consideration of allowing clean contractors on the Berlin Turnpike. Mr. Per Edge, Director of Economic Development. Mr. Edge.
Good evening, good evening.
Good evening, how are you today? Good.
Do it this way, hopefully it'll be a little better for frame of the minutes.
Okay.
Thank you all this evening. Um, yes, um, coming to have a discussion with you, um, clean contractors. We added clean contractors to our GI two, PI and PI two for the last four or five years. Uh, most recently, you have approved Superior Heating and Cooling to go on to four Route. So just for some perspective, this is the type of firms we're talking about. Looking at where we excel as a community, plumbing, HVAC, electrical and similar. Again, we're calling them the theme contractors, 'cause we don't wanna see the big piles of mulch. Um, looking to have a discussion with you and get your thoughts on looking at both BT one and BT two to allow these as a special permit. Reason being, a couple things. One, um, BT one and BT two are our, are our, are our commercial zones on the Berlin Turnpike. South of Demming Road, as we know at this point, the commercial development has been slow. Even pre-COVID, it was very challenging, because it's not as much of an area people are interested in as further north. Little pieces, as we know, once you get south of Route nine, great companies, but not a lot of retail and restaurant. Clean contractors, as we've seen, wanna be great. Like Berlin, I would say at this point, my guess is probably at least twenty-five to probably thirty-five contractors right now, some of which we know where they are, some of them are home-based, I'd like to give them the opportunity. Two properties in mind, that when I was looking to have this discussion with you. The first is the old Portland building, right across from Mickey Finn's. Nice building, had served its purpose for many years. Right now, I don't know whether it's a teardown or it's a renovation, but I know too, that anyone in retail and office are not gonna take that project. It does not make economic sense. If a contractor with the ability to look at it, I think that might be something they would consider to at least take a shot at. The second one is the garage just south of Dunkin' Donuts on the Turnpike. Everyone knows the garage, it's been there for many years. It's another property that its current zoning allows essentially office, retail and restaurants. Very, who owns the plaza next door, also is Dunkin' Donuts, has worked very hard to rent his plaza, he can't rent a plaza, and it's a beautiful plaza. So that's the main reason why I'm coming to talk to you, is to at least have the discussion. I think we need to be cautious on how we do it. But under the special permit, as we've done in other zones, it gives this commission quite a bit of opportunity and leeway to allow outside storage, no outside storage, as well as what a building would look like, particularly if it is on the Turnpike. My hope would be, we would get a couple more mid-state air compressors. Folks that might start small, build a brand-new building, take a building and rehab it. Most of these folks don't need anything that's razzle-dazzle. They really need between four and seven thousand square foot building, two thousand square feet of office, usually the office is for administrative, maybe a couple of managers, warehouse in the back. You'll see many of them now, they have the company trucks, they come in on Monday, they disappear, sometimes don't come back until the next Monday before. The good thing too, the Berlin zip code, as we all know, is a favorable zip code for a company upon which to reach out, for instance. If you're reaching out to someone in Woodbridge or Avon, if you're coming from Berlin, you probably have a better chance to get the business than other more urban communities, which makes us attractive for contractors. So that's really what I'm looking at at this point. Again, open for discussion. Um, this commission has been very welcoming to my thoughts, which is why I'm coming in this direction. I'm not saying to do it tomorrow, but at least get the discussion, because I think it's an opportunity we have right now. Looking at where we are, I mean, if you look at the community, I think we've been pretty blessed for the fact that so many of our companies have worked. I think they've realized the importance of being local with the restaurants and the like, and this potentially could develop.
Okay, well, thank you. One question I do have is that you touched base on back that you were talking about outside landscaping and mulching and stuff. And when we say clean contractors, I guess I'm looking for more of a definition. Uh, we're not just talking landscaping companies here, are we?
We're not, we're, we actually, what we'd be doing is we would be using the language that we essentially had in the other two zones that we haven't here yet. So basically, um, establishments, courier services, industrial repair, irrigation. We do have landscape, building trades, carpentry, electrical, HVAC, plumbing services. And then part of it too is everything needs to be inside or on structured or on vehicles. So essentially, if you were a company that had equipment on the vehicles, you'd allow that. So that would be vitally important to keep those safe things, because they wanna make sure that if we do allow this, we are allowing something that would be presentable both short-term and long-term for the time.
Okay. Um, Maureen, if I can, is this then, is this then, uh, something that we'd be looking to do an amendment to our BT one, BT two?
So, so I think, what I was gonna comment on is, I think, one of, one of the avenues is Chris's avenue of perhaps an amendment to the BT zones for, right? No, but all those are not in the BT zone. Right?
Which ones?
The one to the, the one, the gas station property, is that a BT zone?
Yeah, the, the gas station is BT, yes.
Oh, okay. So, so an amendment to the zone that then allows these additional uses? Um, I think there is, um, I, I think there should be some consideration. And the staff, obviously, that's what we do when we propose an amendment anyway, but it's whether this should go forward with looking towards amendments of some sort. Um, there are avenues for, for instance, forklift property, because it's a non-conforming use that was there, a change to that non-conforming use can follow a different path than an amendment. Um, but I think, like you pointed out, making sure any language for an amendment is very clear as to what you're looking for. We do have a couple of, um, non-conforming, um, non-business, commercial uses in the BT zone that have been there forever, or they trans, they, they transferred from one non-conformity to another, and we've had problems with them from an enforcement standpoint, or the compliance of the site plan was the site plan detailed enough to, for what they are actually doing to show, to give us meat for enforcement. Um, or they, they are non-conforming contractor use already. This one, one particular one, is just way more intense than the one that was there before. We, you know, we don't have any mechanism in zoning for their intensity. They're more successful, or they have a bigger, it's a bigger business, but it still fits in, in that property. Um, we can't prevent that. So I think, um, Chris and I looking into whether this is something you want us to spend some time on and, uh, look to change that zoning or.
Or at least give it another overlay.
Or not, please. Or another overlay, or, you know, I, it's, it's a matter of what mechanism would work um, from the zoning standpoint.
Thank you. Uh, commissioners, do we have any questions?
I just, I think that the wording would have to be very specific. Uh, I'm looking at the, the old commercial installation probably what you're talking about. Uh, and the vehicles and everything there, there are parked now onto the Turnpike right away, basically, all the way up in the curb. Uh, you know, they shouldn't be parked behind the building or inside the building, not out front. So that's another way, you know, and the property's what is a problem too.
Well, yeah, those are things that we would, we would pretty much look at anyway.
You know. And that company, I would say, clean, is at the store, uh, outside the carиль or stuff like that. But it's overrun, it's a commitment.
Yeah.
That company there is only temporary until the.
Mr. Biella.
Sorry.
I'm sorry.
The, the property that they rented was always temporary until the ONG project started in Hartford. That's temporary spot for, for them.
Any other concerns of?
Uh, no concerns, but overall, I think that, uh, this concept makes sense, um, especially when you consider our location in Connecticut as, uh, what it, uh, gives to contractors like that as far as trial times. So, um, I think the fact that it was a special permit thing, that that would give us a lot of oversight over each individual application. So, um, I'm in support of the idea of pursuing.
Okay, and Mr. Wolman?
Thank you, I am also in support of it. You know, having seen what Midstate has done, how nice they've made the building, um, they usually don't equate with contractors, quite honestly. And they've done such a beautiful job, and I think with the special permit, you know, they have to come before, so we still will be able to make sure that it doesn't turn into something that we don't want there. Um, so, uh, I'm, I'm all for supporting this, having staff take a look at it.
Okay. All right, well, I think you have a general consensus here that, um, oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Miller, did you have anything? All right. Here, I know you're an alternate.
Yeah, no, I, I support it as well. The only question I would have is, uh, uh, the mention of courier services. Um, do you see that in your plan, or, or are you mostly focused down like HVAC and other blue collar type of operations?
I'm, I'm really focused on the blue collar, yeah. I'm, I'm focused on the ones that I think we already have seen. I don't see courier service being something, uh.
Yeah.
Part, part of it is, I think, when you look at courier, looking at bigger chunks of space, like in Amazon, you know, we don't have the big chunks of space. I see this really being, and to a large degree, I see this being an, an owner occupant as well. So I don't see this being a big lease thing, in my own opinion. Because many of these folks do lease, they may lease in a big old building in Southington, Bridge, Plainfield. If they can then come to the Turnpike, either renovate a building or build their own, we benefit in a number of ways. And with companies like this too, what they're bringing on that are tax-rolled sometimes is as advantageous tax-wise as what the building is, when you look at the trucks and the equipment. So I think there's really a dual benefit, and you're talking about some really, really good career opportunities as well.
All right, well, looks like you guys have the green light to go ahead and look a little bit further and bring it back up, open, lively, and then we'll go from there. Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Um, but the next one is, uh, not connected, even though it sounds like it is.
Are you also involved with this discussion?
Yes, just sorry, can you, sorry.
Okay.
Pardon? I said let you introduce it.
Okay, the discussion of the Zero Berlin Turnpike map twenty one dashboard, lot one fifteen, lot twenty A, concerning the layout and concept for proposed development including two commercial quarters. Mr. Edge?
Hello again, sir.
Fire here.
Um, yes, so this one, actually, the lot we're talking about here was formerly, um, occupied by greenhouses, it is right next to Tyler Equipment. Um, the address is Berlin Turnpike, though it actually is on Orchard itself, is where the entrance is. I've been working with Priority Electric, um, fire family, uh, been here for many years, they're business in other town, looking to purchase this lot, build one building for themselves, uh, which would be proposed building in phase one, and a second building in phase two. It is currently zoned PI two, so the zoning does fit, not actually a BT zone. Um, what I brought for you today is really just for you to take a look at it and conceptually see if it looks like something that you are meddable to, supportive. The good thing too, this would be a special permit application under the PI two zone. Uh, Priority Electric has been in business for a number of years, and they really would like to be able to come to town, build a building for themselves, and the second building there, which would likely also be for other contractors of similar type. So that's very much what we're talking about. The good thing too is the parcel's been there for a while, it's not been used. Um, the owner is older. Uh, the nice thing too is the concept plan, which actually, uh, our group had put together, uh, which was really helpful, so that we could really visualize this as a group and just kinda get your thoughts on it before, um, the family goes forward to do a full set of plans and application.
Okay. Uh, thank you. Commissioners, or Maureen, do you, do you have any comment on this?
No, only that they, they've come in, they've asked to figure out the type of uses that are allowed in the zone, and this is, you know, fits into that category. Um, but they, you know, the, the investment of moving forward until they at least hear if there's some, some big thing somebody sees that, that would, um, um, that we, as staff, did not see, or that you're noticing, or commenting on for them to make an alteration before they go too far. Again, you still will have the full review process that you'll be following through, and this is not binding for that review process, but feedback run out again.
Okay.
Um, I, I'll go.
Uh, yes, Mr. Wolman, go right ahead.
I think, uh, it's a home run, it's right next to the Tyler rental equipment, it fits in with the zone. Um, the company looking to do this is very successful, and the stuff they do usually is pretty clean, they're currently in the brick, and I believe, uh, so to bring them into Berlin and build twenty seven thousand square feet of, uh, new space, I think would be great for us, and, and it's a great spot for it, you know, right there next to Tyler Equipment.
Thank you.
I just wanna say that I agree with Commissioner Wolman's thoughts on the project, and it's a good idea.
Okay, uh, Mr. Miller?
I guess living on Orchard Road, my own, I, I think it is a good use that property's been breaking for a long, long time of years, tried to do everything under the sun with those parcels that's got over there. Uh, my only concern would be is that, you know, to address a little bit that traffic light there, it's a three, three-car light, most of the time, except for in the morning, it's a four-car light, trying to get in and out of there, so if you're adding like fifty car or something coming in at rush hour traffic or whatever, not, we have a lot of rush hour traffic closing off Tollgate, that's one way in, one way out, depends upon what's in there. Sometimes there's stuff coming out of Tyler, it's difficult to get out that light, queue up pretty far back, if you've got a big tractor going out, or, that would be my own concern.
Okay.
Let's say, I can, I can, I've, I've not dealt with this before, but I can reach out to DOT and maybe have them take a look at that light, and we can mention the fact that with this additional potential traffic. Uh, one other thing to mention, especially as, as a resident of Orchard, is, um, they're planning on leaving a good portion of the wooded area, particularly in the rear. Um, it's probably sixty, seventy years old tree, so they're planning on keeping that and keeping a nice buffer between the property and the residential there. So that, when they were very particular on that, because it gets important, especially what's there to leave the nature of it.
And the benefit is, there's a light there.
Yep, I'm sorry.
This is parcel, just one residential, a little while back, this place that's.
No, this is either the one.
No, 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 this is, yes, this is always been a, for, for commercial.
Well, this piece going up.
Yeah, go back to the other one now.
On the toll gate road. Yeah. Yeah, driveway going up Tollgate Road was a piece that they, he came in there and had about put residential.
Yeah, he, he was, that's the original, his original concept was to have, uh, commercial in front, and then it was gonna do like residential clusters in the back, and that would have taken out that whole wooded area. But now it's.
Excuse me.
That's okay. It looks like, um, he's just going with the commercial tethered to the front, um.
I just wouldn't want a commercial property going out of driveway for Tollgate.
Oh, we're using that.
No, 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 actually, his, his plan is at this point, if, um, the neighbors are meddable to actually donate the finger to the adjacent property over, so there is no access to the residential neighborhood. Yeah, that, that, that was our discussion too.
That's all.
If I may, the, the zoning wouldn't allow commercial access through the residential ladder. Like, they couldn't do the driveway, if they have a driveway that would go to a commercial zone, which the front driveway on the Berlin Turnpike does. They couldn't use that driveway according to our regulations. If they built, if they built one and one is not there, so. You wouldn't approve it? Yeah. Let's just put it that way. Put it that way.
That's fine. That's a big one.
Yeah, I mean, even, even though we've just started the process, this is one of the most conscientious groups I've seen, because they're keenly aware of the fact that they are surrounded by residential with the, the wooded areas. So I think that they're gonna be an amazing addition, because they're already looking at those things they haven't even formally applied, which to me is important, and they are, basically, it's two Berlin families, two brothers, so I know their, their intention is to be here long-term and to plant root right here.
Yeah, I, you know, I'm not opposed to the idea of keeping the commercial as close to the title, tailor equipment as you can. But I also have a concern about the, the, the little boulevard aisle in there, and as the cars, I mean, it's, it's, there's gonna have to be some real consideration there with that light, because not only do you have people queued up for a light that's way too short, but you also have people shooting off the highway. And they're coming off of a highway, and they're doing their fifty miles an hour, and they've gotta come down to twenty-five real fast. And I know that the, um, tailor equipment right now, I mean, there's a yield sign there, but, and they have a stop sign, so that they can cross over and get to that short little light. I mean, so, that, that's gonna be a real, somehow it's really gotta be fixed, because you do have workers coming out of that, once you have tailor equipment coming out, you have people on Orchard Road trying to get, and then you have people flying off the hot, off the Turnpike, it's, it's really, um, it's, it's gonna be something that really has to be sorted out, it's gonna have to be given a lot of care and thought on. But I, I don't think that I'm opposed to keeping it, I'm, I'm pleased, uh, about the dedication of the wooded property. Would that be dedicated to like a conservation easement? Is that what they're looking at, that parcels that are working with the neighborhoods?
I, I think at this point, they're open for discussion. I mean, it says here, it says potential conservation or future dedication to open space. So I don't think they've fully decided at this point, but I think their idea is to, in some way, make sure it's not developed.
All right. Um, all right, I know that we're just in, um, I think we're just still in discussion, right?
I made, I thought, I'm gonna tell one, here was a eight-foot fence, uh, in the residence.
No, that's the next one.
Thank, 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 thank you all.
So we're just with commission. Okay, so I think that we're probably headed in the right direction, and we're looking forward to, um, seeing something more.
Absolutely, I, I will definitely let them know, and, uh, we'll, we'll pursue it with them, and then we'll, after working with, uh, Mr. Bohan, we'll look at the intersection there, and I maybe reach out to DOT, and maybe there's a discussion there on some safety.
Can, can I say one last thing?
Uh, yes, Mr. Wolman.
If, seems like some folks are concerned with the approach. Could you, could you flip the driveway to the other side of the, the lot? They got the driveway coming out closest to the Turnpike, could you put it on the other side of the building, which would give you more room coming out and, and extend that queue?
I, if I may, I think in his design plan, he was trying to keep it away from the residential, um, homes, which, now the next one over is actually the lot that is subject to that, sub, to lot subdivision that you just approved the public hearing for, um, is that next lot down. So I think that's what they were designing, we can have them look at that as well.
I just think if someone's, if some of the commission concerns was the, coming out onto that road, for safety, you know, it may be switched to the other side and put a buffer like he has drawn on the drawing to put that buffer on the residential.
Or the other thing is, he, he maybe even be able to come to compromise with the tailor equipment to be able to have just the one access there, and not have to do another curb cut, but just sort of straighten that. I mean, I'm saying straighten, that's a wrong word, but consider a realignment, you see? So you may actually be able to do something with them, which would, uh, resolve it for both with only one curb cut, which is an existing one now, so.
I think I can bring that, this to them and have some discussions.
Okay, so, um, pursue also maybe reaching out to the police department to see if they have accident data or something, that, you know, they may have some feedback they often do, um, with regard to this. And it is a Berlin Turnpike property, um, although the frontage is mostly on Orchard Road, so we'll have to see, DOT may have something official to say as opposed as well about it to, to be back from each other, if something Chris has more on.
Perfect.
Right.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. All right, next up is the discussion of the meeting dates for twenty twenty one. All right.
So we're going to have a discussion about twenty twenty one, the meeting dates?
Yeah, that's fair enough.
So, we had hoped we'd have something for you, but can you recall a few years ago, uh, your, your meetings used to be, uh, the second and fourth Thursdays, I believe?
Yeah.
And when Mark was the planner, you switched it to the first and third, um, at last year. Um, we, most of you already had plans that probably went awry for twenty twenty. Um, and we kept the schedule as such, and it was suggested I bring it back up again if you wanted to go back to the old schedule or keep the first and third schedule. Um, and we'll be making up the calendar for, for acceptance at the next meeting or two.
Okay.
We'll probably distribute it at the next meeting, and then, uh.
So we're on the first and the third, and, and we have the option to switch that to.
Right, but for, for several years, you were on the second and fourth.
Of the second and the fourth Thursday of the month.
So I just didn't know where you all were at, and.
I think we have so much fun, we should come here every week.
I'll second that.
I'll second that.
Um.
Do you have a preference for me?
I, I don't really, I think it's just, um, it was just a matter of, last year, it, you know, it was a matter of, okay, when are meetings? Um, I did notice in, I think it's the handbook, it says the fir, that the charge of the commission is the. Um I did notice in I think it's the handbook, it says the first that the charge of the commission is the second and fourth, but that's altered all over the place by commissions creating their schedule and the reason the calendar gets published in advance.
Okay.
So I don't think that's an issue or Mark wasn't noticed in it, it was.
Okay.
So first and third is fine, I just I wanted to throw it out before I cram put the effort into the calendar.
Alright.
Anyone else?
Oh. Okay. Where's the Oh.
Which?
Which one works for you, the first and
Every week.
Every week, oh, we sure have started.
You better be here every week, buddy, if they're not, it's gonna be a problem.
No. I'm not coming Thanksgiving.
Well, man, little people has a couple things to say about that.
Oh jeez. Anyone um
I have no preference.
No preference to him, any preference? Uh no.
No.
No, no, no. Keep it the way it is or?
Mark Mark going, we'll go with the.
Okay. I guess keep it the way it is, whatever way that is. Okay, second.
I can't go first.
First and the first. First and I guess we'll go with the first and the third.
First and.
Alright.
Okay, alright, first and third ended that though. Okay, on to new business, so we have the site plan amendment of Kevin M. Bundy Bundy overhaul and repair for a fence at lot four, block one on lot one fifty three at lot four, twenty sixty one Berlin turnpike, here for a fence.
I don't see them here.
Am I s- am I looking at the right thing?
Yeah.
Well, yes, so so if I can explain a little bit, you're looking at a fence because it's a commercial property and fencing is our site plan amendment.
Yes.
It is in an odd uh or rather a unique location going through the middle of a property when there's no use on the property. Um and um the same family owns the adjacent parcel, so I wanted we were also wanting to get a couple of things on the record with regard to it. Has wetlands on the property, these things are all all things that add up to it needing site plan. Um I don't see that they're here. Uh there's no one else and no call.
Alright.
Um however, generally, well, I don't know, we can continue or Adam has been in contact with them. Perhaps, I don't know if you want us to deal with it as a staff administratively or if you need advocate, we are, I know in generally speaking, advocates usually are not advocates. It is a pretty um simple.
So it's an eighth fence that they're putting up on your property, it's cutting through the property, it's not like crossing rivers or streams or or stream?
No, it's going up.
Basically brid bridging between two sets of trees on either side, this is the old driving range, so it's basically bisecting, if you will, almost the driving range to separate the the Bundy operation here to the south, that's a different parcel, but down that as well from the turnpike, so they're talking about people are still hitting golf balls over there and they wanted a defense for security purposes, so basically just sticking into the trees on either sides of the.
Okay, is it a chain link fence or is it an estate fence like a black wrought iron fence?
It's proposed to be a black um but black chain link, so the black covered chain link fence.
Okay. Um.
I will note that they we did receive staff comments from
I just.
the wetlands agent and wetlands review is not necessary, it's in your supplement, his commentary, your supplemental package, be advised that I recuse the Bundy request and spell security fencing on lot one fifty three block four of the Berlin turnpike and determine that wetland permitting will not be required at this time, future development of the present parcel will require permit.
Yeah. Alright, well, I don't unless anyone has any further desire to leave the fence, I think we should maybe leave this for Maureen who's staff. So is that with them about the fence?
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Alright, moving on, I was very excited, thank you. Um the final subdivision application of Earl Wicklund for phase two, which is four lots on a preliminary approval, eighteen lot subdivision, lot ninety one block ten on West Lane. Now it's supposed to.
Hey, that is me, I thought I was retired too.
No, I called a lot of retire.
Over me there.
I'm chairman.
Okay.
Um I I recuse myself on this uh application way back when it was before us.
Okay.
I'm no longer involved with the land clearing, but I feel like I should still recuse myself.
No, that's fine, because we have Peter here to step up and take your spot on this issue. Okay, so papers on deck, alright, go ahead, start with.
For the record, our co-babe Inchi Cole's sons in Plansville, representing Mr. Wicklund, he unfortunately could not be here tonight, uh son John is here, so can answer any questions. It's a rather simple uh proposition, we're asking for a second phase of project, four lots. Uh you originally approved the subdivision uh and a first phase which included all the frontage lots basically along the road, these are the first two material lots on both sides of the proposed roadway. As part of phase one, uh all the open space on both sides is dedicated to the town of Berlin. So that was all taken care of, so there all the open space has been dedicated, this is simply just the approval of the final approval of four lots, obstructed road about midway through with a temporary cul-de-sac uh be able to sell those lots. Uh another thing I'd just like to bring up, and this just came to my attention. Uh the road was approved with the words Nature's Edge Court. Mr. Wicklund would like the commission to consider just changing the road name to simply Nature's Edge without the court. Uh we haven't shown it on the map as such, but we can make the revisions, give them staff and add it to the MyLot at the time the map is filed, if it's agreeable with the commission.
Okay.
If I may, on that subject, I'm gonna look, I'm gonna see if I can find it quickly, but I think a road requires that
Yes.
what is it, is it a street, is it a road, is it a court, is it a trail, you know, I think it requires one of those words, yeah.
A designation.
As opposed to an edge, I don't know that an edge is a
Well, it's it's called.
It's from your beer.
So I'm gonna look to see if I think the the regulations speak to acceptable or things.
Yeah. Okay.
Or maybe you will let us administratively confirm that after.
And I I know. I I know we've we've I'd brief the mission to our pleasure for not bringing it up again. But we've figured this is the best way to do this, it's a road, it hasn't been uh no building permits to put on the roads, we can't do it this time.
While she's looking that up, are do we take care of that, we took care of the easement?
The open space easements have all been taken care of as part of the open space.
Okay. Alright.
Yeah, the memo that uh staff report, I think basically goes back to the uh original subdivision approval. But she did note lots six and seven and fifteen and sixteen or 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 part amount of section two.
So that's six, seven and fifteen?
Uh she's got it in the table here, yeah, lots six, seven, fifteen and sixteen are four lots.
Uh notice it says temporary cul-de-sac, but it is I mean the this blue temporary cul-de-sac. What's mine?
Yeah, the temp the temporary cul-de-sac is
And the hammerhead at the end or?
The temporary cul-de-sac is just shown, so in the event the full subdivision should never go. There's a lot of easement area there.
Um then he'll put a hammerhead at the end, we turn around.
Right, that's all it is.
That's all he need.
That's all it is. And it's depicted on the final subdivision.
Okay. Is there anyone else who has questions regarding your application? I think it's just a question of the um the naming.
Do you have a comment on that answer? Yeah. So I think uh right, um if I may, I'll just add that um the department comments basically came in as no comment, the ones we got were reiterations of the comments previously made, that the town engineer reviewed the final plans for the road, you know, as it gets built new wall bonds, appropriate bonds, that um there would be a stop sign at the end of the street. And no further comments, I talked to the uh police department. I don't think we have them written. The se- the street name is section fifty one oh six of the subdivision regulation. In general, street names can shall conform to the following classifications, street, avenue or road, major or major collector streets, driver lanes or local residential street, except as follows, court or place is intended to street permanent circle, a street in which it is stated. So it doesn't compel it, it just it it doesn't seem to compel the naming, but identifies that with that at their end for the cla- classification of the street. So it's got all.
Commissioners, any good sense one way or another?
I'd change it, I mean that's what we have in town. I'd knock something off of it.
So you're saying go with this at Nature's Edge?
Court.
With the court.
Yeah.
Okay. George, any feedback on that? Yeah, Tim, any preference?
Most of that was the 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 name was from uh similar to any other road in town. That's why they were put a four a road on the end of it. Uh because because it was over the court here and over the road here, it would be a little different destination of where you're going on a fire or something like that, so uh obviously it's not uh similar to the other names in town, I don't see a problem with it. Without road names.
Well, it's approved originally. And there is Porters Pass and there is Bishop's Curve.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I don't think there's a conflict with anything nearby.
Yeah, and there's no conflict with the way.
No, and the reason they're doing this is just because that was the original name of the subdivision, nature whatever way they marketed and they just felt it was better from a marketing standpoint of just supplementing. Providing on Nature's Edge.
As long as we don't confuse the postal service, like seventeen, eighteen.
There's there's no valid options on that for already. And we didn't look in the file of the map what the name. It's like the might per a short example, my road was always Stiefel Ute Drive. But all of a sudden now it's truncated to Stiefel Ute, everybody knows that is Stiefel.
Yeah.
But as approved, it was Stiefel Ute Drive, so.
Yeah.
We just wanted to avoid the confusion.
Alright, well, if there's no driving uh reason to keep it or whatever, I guess we'll act with us and and just go with Nature's. Is it?
Um I think it's probably a motion to do that because that was part of the approval would be appropriate.
Okay. Okay.
I can motion to change the name to Nature's Edge Court and approve the uh next phase.
Alright, thank you, Mr. Wolman. Do we have a second?
Changing it to Nature's Edge.
Excuse me. I excuse me, I thought as I leaned back, when I just said the wrong thing, allow them to change the name to Nature's Edge along with the approval of the second phase.
Yeah.
Okay.
See, I don't feel as bad no more.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Oh, alright, we have a second. And we have a second from Ms. Jorsey, further discussion? And all those in favor, aye, those opposed, so.
Aye.
Thank you.
There you go. Onto the public hearings, so do we have a call for the public hearings, Brian?
Uh you know I mean I could read out the paper back.
Oh, okay, oh, yeah, okay. Alright, so we are on public, alright, thanks, that's what I can just give you. So special uh first is special permit site plan application of Richard Bunson, Demming Road Business, Demming LLC for building on each of four existing lots and related site improvements, so are we moving to have all, we're we're having all four leases full, right? Serieses one, map ten, dash one, block eight three, lot three A.
Yeah, I got a message, you you tapped me.
Demming Road, seventy five thousand square feet building on a real lot for contractor shop use. Two, map ten dash one, lot eighty three, lot three A on Demming Road, thirty six hundred and six square feet building for contractor shop use. Item three, map ten, lot one, lot eighty three, lot three two, three A two, Demming Road, sixty sixty seven hundred and fifty square feet building for contractor shop use. And item four, map ten dash one, lot eighty three, lot three A three, Demming Road, nine thousand square foot building on a real lot for contractor use. Uh this is and October fifteenth and it's continued to November nineteenth, twenty twenty meeting, okay, so that's that. Moving on to item B, special permit, site plan application for Thomas Rourke, military experience museum incorporated for military experience museum at seventy six Chamberlain Highway. Map thirty dash two, block seventy four, lot thirty seven and zero Chamberlain Highway, and zero Chamberlain Highway, map thirty dash two, block seventy four, lot forty nine. This was opened September third, twenty twenty. As I announced previously, the applicant for military experience has requested to be continued. But um would what date do we want to continue this, two more ring or
um it can potentially be on the nineteenth, but we don't have the additional information yet, so I would request that you allow staff to um to schedule it once we've had time to um receive and distribute the information as long as we don't run out of extension time, we're still we still have available extension time through
Okay.
the December third meeting and potentially the executive order additional extension time.
Okay. Alright, so for now, we're going to move to the nineteenth. And then we'll talk about the old business, so the old business, we basically have the Richard Richard Bunson business, which was item one through four that is now continued. And then uh item B, which is a special permit for military um experience, which is now moved off to the nineteenth of November.
I'll let you know, yeah.
Okay, so that closes out our business for today, except for Maureen has one more thing she'd like to say.
We do, we are we have been given the request of um Kay Brothers LLC for their um C L. And in during those inspections, we found um that the architecture of the building has changed since your approval.
Right.
Um and Mr. Nadine is on the line, uh Mr. Kippe, I'm sorry, um is on the line um in case you have any questions. However, I do have the drawings or the rather the uh provided the plans of what is there.
Okay, yeah.
Are feel comfortable passing them around or not, do we have them up or no, because you didn't get to, we didn't get them to
No, we didn't get that.
Um maybe a couple of you can share. Here and down here. Um please change the roof line so that the building has a flat roof now with a parapet on the front and the sides are flat. Um the original approval.
Alright, where was this?
I'm sorry, this is the new gas station at the corner of Demming Road
Oh.
that came down, they they removed the gas station, they built the new building with a drive.
They built it in a.
They built the new building with the drive through around building, real tight, tight lot.
Yes.
Right, a lot of non-conformities, um but the the building inspector particularly has um you know, well, we all have concerns, all three sides are kind of fronts. Because you come up Demming Road, you see the back of the building, which was utility back of the building with the back door, et cetera, from the beginning. And then the side on Demming Road is a front and then the front on the Berlin turnpike is also a front, so the change
I'm fronted.
The change to the architecture is a change, you know, and a lot of times the roof lines and whatnot, that is what the commission has been looking at, so um this was going to be the Demming roadside, now it's flat, as you'll see in I think the second phase of the block. I didn't bring up the first side, the official side.
Yeah.
So and we just wanna, we didn't feel comfortable doing this administratively for the changes, um he made changes without coming to the town to show us. for the changes um, he made, changes without coming to the town to show us.
What made him think he could do that?
I.
Perhaps we should ask him.
I do not.
Is, is, Mr., is it uh, Khalid?
Wow.
Khalid.
I know that you're with us and um, I, we, we just have a question from the commission. What compelled you to change the roof line without uh, returning to the commission?
Uh, be honest with you, uh, uh, ma'am, is actually there was a, there was some odd uh, walls which are not parallel. And our structural engineer, he suggested us to have this thing, uh, advise that you can keep the parapet wall. It give you the look of that, uh, you know, the architectural on a front on a both sides. And keeping some of the equipment, uh, because we are a tight lot and there was no way we can uh, uh, keep the equipment or some of the unit in a back or anywhere. So that's the reason we just like, two reason for the structural for the, for the, because of the odd, uh, both walls are like, uh, they are not parallel. And the building was not square, and that's what we can, he, uh, he recommended, highly recommended to you, uh, to have this like a flat and create a parapet wall on both side. And it's, it's, it's honest mistake, we, we thought maybe this can be because the inspection was going on and uh, it's, I should bring it back and I, we never realized this is gonna be a major issue. As long as the structurally everything, all that, uh, you know, is a secure and uh, better. But in reality, be honest with you, uh, that uh, commission, there's a whole like a people around the neighborhood, they stop over, they really appreciate what, what the workmanship and the way the whole thing came. And uh, see, we can get your blessing. I promise, there's another project that's happening, it's not going to be, repeat this thing. So everything is finished, complete, we just need your blessing, so we really, really appreciate if you can help us out, please.
Madam Chair, if I may?
Uh, yes, Mr. Wolman, please.
If he had a structural engineer look at this, and it was a safety issue. If his structural engineer provides us documentation that that was the case, and that's why they did this for the safety of the public. Um, this might help us understand why this was done, it was just oversight by coming back to us. So if they can provide that evidence, I don't know about the rest of the commission, but I think I'd be a little okay with that, even though I'm not a big fan of the way it was done.
Okay, that's, that's a good suggestion. Uh, Mr. Khalid, did you hear what the Monsieur Wolman was suggesting?
Uh, can, can, can he repeat one more time, I'm sorry, ma'am?
I'm saying you mentioned that the structural engine, the structural engineer said that uh, this was a, a safety issue um, as far as the safety of the building. So if you could get a letter from the structural engineer indicating that the reason this was changed was safety to the public in the building, uh, that would be more valuable for us to have that on the file.
I, I can request him, that can be provided, because like, this is the purely a trust uh, engineer mention. And I can provide that letter, that's no problem.
Maureen, I have a question, the mechanicals, I'm thinking back on this application, mechanicals were always uh, the ceiling of the roof.
You know, I couldn't find that immediately, I can't find them on the ground, so I'm thinking so, but I don't know how that would have worked with the, this group.
Because I, I'm just wondering, if you just want that mechanic to.
Unless they were not that, but that, but they are up on the roof, they probably were gonna have notches out of the roof on it for the mechanicals, um, like several.
Okay, it's just that I can't re- I can't remember if the mechanicals were originally approved for the roof.
As long as they're not visible, it, um, the regulations will allow, but I'm not, well, I, I understand, I understand that there's allowance, it's just that I don't know that that was also Understand, oh.
part of the approval, that the mechanicals were on the roof. Because I think if we knew the mechanicals were gonna be on the roof, we would have looked closer at the roof design and paraffin, because we have requested that from other public applicants to dress it out.
The pass, yep.
So that's why I'm wondering, did he also move the mechanicals without the approval?
Yeah, the back wall would have, have the same requirement, back wall, that is a left hook of the back wall covering the mechanicals on the roof, uh, coming from.
That was, Mrs. Chairman, there was another issue that what, uh, that was comes, uh, when the, uh, the engineer for the trust engineer came on this picture. This was a two rooftop unit, there was a vacuum cooler, a compressor, and there's another, uh, equipment was on a roof which is completely, you can, you cannot see from any view coming in from left or right or front. It's completely hidden and the parapet is in front of it, is almost close to eight to nine feet, cover the whole entire unit inside.
Okay, but my, Mr. Khalid, my, my, my thought process here was, is that when we look at this original plan.
Yes, ma'am.
I do not recall that the mechanicals were placed on the roof. For some reason, I suspected they were on the ground. And the reason, the reason I'm thinking that this was the original plan was because if you had come to us and told us that the mechanicals were going to be placed on the roof, then this commission, knowing this commission, we would have looked at the paraffin for dressing out to hide the mechanicals on the roof, and this would not be an issue. So, I'm wondering, did you move the mechanicals from the ground to the roof also without the permission of the commission?
Ma'am, there, yes, ma'am, there's absolutely, there's no room and around the, uh, the back or side where can be, this unit was in place. Only we have a backside is a dumpster enclosure. And that was a main reason that, you know, we, we, that was another consideration to keep that unit on a roof and have completely hidden. So that way it don't have any visibility or anybody can see it around the any parameters.
Okay, I understand that, but I'm thinking back to the original application, which was the one that we're approved. I understand why you did what you did, but I don't know, I, I'm trying to recall it was actually approved by the commission. Now, the other thing too is that I believe you had said, or wanted to put a drive-through window um, on the side. I, I believe that you had actually proposed that as part of the uh, application originally, that you were considering having perhaps, I don't know, was it Dunkin' Don- Dunkin' Donuts or whatever, that was gonna be a drive-through, if people come and get coffee as well and continue on, because I remember thinking to myself, wow, that's really tight for a drive-through window. But I, I also remember that as being part of the discussion, and I'm wondering what happened with that, if that got knocked out as well. So, I, I, I guess what I'm. Oh, I'm sorry, I guess, no, 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 that's okay, I, I guess what I'm just searching for is I'm wondering how off the original approval you are.
We, we are the drive, the, all the drive-through is in place, all the footprint is in place, the dumpster enclosure is in place. Only thing, only thing is only these are, the compressor and these things are hidden on a roof, which you cannot see around it, ma'am. Rest of the entire project, everything is hundred percent according to that plan we submit, ma'am.
Alright, well, that's why I'm waiting on my planner, my staff here.
I, I'm not finding, uh, I don't have the working drawings, that, you know, the building permit drawings, but I don't have, um, I'm not finding a reference to where the mechanicals were originally placed nor.
Trying to think, we, we approved the drive-through that we went onto the chemicals in the back, it's so tight, so I'm guessing that we approved, you must have approved it on the roof, no?
But, but I don't, I don't recall that, because I remember there was, there was a couple just of different discussions, and one of them was a future drive-through after the gas station got up and going. Paul, you know.
Yeah.
We're gonna wait to see about your suggestion, Mr. Wolman. And perhaps that will also give staff time to research to go back to the original approval. My concern is that if the, if the mechanicals were on the ground and then lifted up, and we didn't know about that, then we have a, a second issue to address as well.
Wow, if you give me one last second.
And I don't mean to put the pressure on you right now, Maureen, because we have to wait for the, uh, for the engineer's report as well. So I mean, it's not something that's gonna be resolved tonight.
Okay, let Maureen check it out, and I think it's just a letter.
I'd like to clarify. Right, comment on two things, the, right off the hat.
Okay.
Um, to clarify what I understood, and I'm, you know, a little difficulty with the, with the phone. Um, part of the design of the roof is the shape of the building. Is what I understood was one, one of the reasons they had to change the shape of the roof, was because the shape of the building to build a, um, a gable roof, they, they had to figure out something different, so I don't know if it's the, as much about the structural, it is the structural integrity of it as of, um, you know, just with regard to public safety, it's the structural integrity and needing the code.
Right.
Of course, the building inspectors have not addressed that yet, because that's what draws their attention, that we all needed to look at the approved, you know, I hadn't gotten the C O, we haven't gotten the C O request yet, so.
Okay.
It was during inspections that they're like, wait, this is, it's not a plan that we're inspecting, so that's where the discrepancy came in.
Oh, okay.
Um, and also that the drive-through was approved as part of the project, the pro- the drive-through was approved because that, they got variances for the driveway to go around and through. The mechanicals be, on the previous building were on the ground to the north side, um, you know, the pipe
Yeah.
on that side and obviously aren't there, that's exactly where the window is. Um, and what caused confusion when we looked at the drawings, the, the picked photographs you see today is that there appears to be plantings all along that side. They're bald plants, they're not planted there. They're, they must be waiting to be planted, we had to scrutinize that plant, but that confused me with the drive-through.
Oh. Yeah.
I'm like, wait a minute, he's supposed to have a drive-through, why is there landscaping there?
Yeah.
They're bald plants, and they're, they're there while they're waiting to be something to happen to that one there. So, I'm glad it's, verify that for you.
I, I'm, I'm sorry, yeah. Yes. Mrs. Chairman, I'm sorry, those tree was let, they, they deliver on the same morning and they were just like a temporary sitting there in front of the drive-through window, but they, they already planned today in place, ma'am.
Okay, oh, that's good to know for the trees sake, though. Uh, I hate to see him sitting there getting all balled up. Anyway, alright.
I'm very surprised that Mark's approval letter doesn't say where the mechanicals are, so I'm just quickly looking through that to see.
Yeah, like I, like I said, we, we do have to, you know, we're gonna follow through, I think, with Mr. Wolman's suggestion and and um, this will give us a little bit more time to, to look at it, okay?
Alright, well, put them in.
So, um, alright, so Mr. Khalid, that's what we're gonna do, is uh, please talk to your engineer, uh, regarding Commissioner Wolman's suggestion. And um, do we need a motion on that, or? Maureen, or do I need that as a motion, or that's just?
No, this is here for discussion, and you, you like it added to the agenda, when we get that information, we'll do so.
That would be excellent, okay, does everyone concur? It's the best way to proceed, okay, that's great, alright, thank you, Mr. Khalid, for your time and your patience.
Thank you, ma'am.
Okay, and we'll talk with you soon. Alright, so now.
Are we not in a German?
We're in a German.
A German.
Alright, well.
Take a motion, turn.
Alright, so Tim Zuma has the motion, turn, uh, second by Ms. Jorsey, um, for the rest.
Alright, sir. She's expecting.
It's uh, currently, wait, it's eight oh four in the evening and we are German, oh, wait, wait. All those in favor?
Aye, aye.
I forgot where it was, I forgot where it was, sorry, there you go. What was, I said, I lost my words.